Roll call please, Jay.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Tim Poplin. Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
So move.
Roll call please.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
No items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience will move to current business. Item one. Consideration and possible action to approve task order number three amendment one to the Delta Airport Consultants, Inc. Agreement for Professional Services in amount of ninety-two thousand dollars for phase one to relocate existing taxiway A with the city's five percent match of four thousand six hundred dollars to be funded from budgeted capital and private funds.
Move to approve. Thank you.
I might point out that the finished product is on your screen up there, so the new taxiway allows for large business jets, easy access on and off the runway. Looks really good.
Roll call please, Jay.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
There you go. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion hearing. Moving to our regular meeting of the Seminole Gas Department. Roll call please.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Tim Poplin. Larry Church.
Sure.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda. There you go. Roll call please.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
We have a, I'm sorry, motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move. So.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion passes. We'll move on to the regular meeting of the Seminole Municipal Department. Roll call please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Tim Poplin. Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passing.
With no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, we'll move on to current business. Item one. Consideration and possible action to approve a draw of funds from the United States Department of Agriculture totaling eight hundred forty-four thousand dollars, seven, eight hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-seven cents for work completed by subcontractors for Crossland Heavy Contractors from December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four through January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five under contract number WWTP two four zero one zero SP for construction of the new wastewater treatment plant. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Roll call please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item two. Consideration and possible action to approve a draw of funds from the United States Department of Agriculture totaling twenty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents for work completed by wall engineering through February fifteenth, twenty twenty-five under contract number WWTP two four zero one zero SP invoice number fifteen related to construction of the new wastewater treatment plant. It will approve.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item three. Consideration and possible actions are proven easement necessary for installation of electrical power to the new wastewater treatment plant and situated in the southeast quarter of section twenty-seven, township nine, north range six east of the Indian Meridian in Seminole County, being ten feet in width. Move to approve.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Thank you. Roll call please. Or all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I just noticed my iPad is recording everything I'm sending you. And that has messed up all my notes, so there we go. All right, this will be interesting when it's my turn to talk. Oh, boy.
Hopefully.
All right, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Seminole City Council. Roll call please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Larry Church.
Sure.
Tim Poplin. Chris Anson.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a forum.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please bow your head for our prayer, please. We're gonna say the Lord's Prayer in honor of E. Patterson. Our fathers, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, and so we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Thank you very much. You may be seen. We'll move to consideration and action of consent agenda. So move. Thank you. Roll call please.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, I want to has public hearing, but we want to do some presentations before that. So our first presentation is going to be for our storm spotters. So Ernie Wallace is our current Seminole Emergency Management Director, and he has been since two thousand and six. He is following in the footsteps of his father as Hughes County Civil Defense. There's when it started. Ernie started spotting storms with his dad as a teenager. During Ernie's time here, he's dealt with several not roll calls. If I can tell you this. Several floods and a few tornadoes during that time. He's a OK First certified and has served on the OK First Advisory Board. Ernie has also served on the Oklahoma Emergency Management Association Board as well. Ernie is a key player in the successful operation of storm spotting. He keeps all of our spotters informed on what he sees on the radars and hears from those in the field from other area spotters. He then disseminates that information to our spotters. And Ernie, I want to thank you for your service to our city. And with that, I will turn the program over to Ernie. See, you just have to keep going if you have a mess up, right? Figured out. He didn't miss anything. Do you need this? Do you need it or?
Hey. I, I wanted to do this for some time. And I have to thank Jeff in his retirement, if you will, because I realized that this would be his last month. And I reached out to him and asked him if he would consider. And I'd ask him to take the time to read the, read the proclamation that has been prepared. These spotters really do a tremendous job for our community. And with, with no pay. There's a couple of them not here tonight. And, but I'd like to recognize them.
I'll, I'll be happy to read this.
Would you please?
Would you? April twenty-fifth. March twenty-twenty-five is storm spotter month. Whereas Seminole storm spotters are vital to the safety of the citizens of Seminole, and whereas Seminole storm spotters provide the ground truth that the radar beam over Seminole cannot see below three thousand feet. And whereas Seminole storm spotters are subject to activation year-round and at all hours of the day. And whereas Seminole storm spotters are volunteers that are well-trained and have a combined one hundred and fifty-plus years of experience. And whereas Seminole storm spotters put themselves in harm's way and risk damage to the first-hand vehicle. And whereas Seminole storm spotters are often leave family members at home to fend for themselves. And whereas Seminole storm spotter purchase, install, and maintain their own tools, including radios, subscription services, and protective clothing. And now therefore, I, Mayor Jeff Griffin, do hereby proclaim March twenty-twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five as Seminole Storm Spotter Month to recognize, thank, and honor the volunteers that are the Seminole storm spotters.
Thank you. Like I say, I've been wanting to do this for some time, and I'll start with Jeff, and I don't know if you I'd like the spotters to come forward and stand and get to, get the council members to jump in behind him. If you don't want to stand, Jeff, you can wait and come in until the last.
Okay.
Jeff, Jeff has been a spotter for me for I know it's one way too. Seventeen years. Luckily. Because when he started becoming a spotter, spotter Saxon who had been twenty-five years tried to kill him. Drove him, they drove themselves right into the May ten, twenty-ten tornado. And we're sure glad they're here. As I said, Steve has been a spotter for the city of Seminole for twenty-five years. And that's, that's the number I'm using with calculus. He's not here. He, he tried all day long to get here. But my, my longest-term spotter is Jim Collier. Jim Collier has been spotting for forty-six years. He, he started with his son Cory. And when Cory grew up and moved off, Rhonda goes with him. And she called me late Saturday and said, he's tried all day long to get better and be here, but he can't. But I promise you, if we were to go in the storm spot move, he would be on his deathbed sitting out there by the Earl Throw Quick Stop spotting for us. And I will tell you one quick story on Jim. The twenty-ten, May ten, twenty-ten tornado, as you all may or may not recall, but it hit Norman first. And I'm in the ELC and I've got what's called NWS chat where I can chat with the weather service. I've got the radar. I've got a ham radio that I can talk to the weather service with. And Jim calls in on the radio. And by the way, Jim's one of those. And, and we all kind of laugh. He's, there's no chit-chat with Jim. When he says something on the radio, we all stop and listen because he's, his experience and his expertise, we know it's, he's got something. He called in, saying, Ernie, I've got a tornado. Just went by me. It's headed north. So I immediately on the NWS chat, it doesn't work. So I pick up the ham radio. It doesn't work. So I finally picked up the phone, called the National Weather Service and said, we got a tornado. So the redundancy works and as you know, that, I don't have the stats here. This is about the spotters and not the storms, but that storm did a major amount of damage, especially in all north of town, a mile or so. Josh Pyron, Josh Pyron has been a spotter for eleven years. Adam Baker. You guys come on up here because I've called your name. Just stand up here in front of these people so they know who's who. Adam Baker is one of those. I do not have to call Adam Baker. Adam Baker will be out there and say, I'm out here. So when, when we get ready to go, he's there. Daniel Fritz has been spotting for fifteen years. Bob Swearingen, Bob Swearingen's our newest spotter and he too has experienced Saxon's navigational, navigational skills. And he's been a spotter for five years. In addition to, to these guys, Dylan Whitstein has been a spotter with us for seven years. And Michael Westmoreland has been a spotter for thirty-five years. I, they make my job easy. They make me nervous when a storm approaches. It's my job to keep them safe. And that's not always easy, you know? And I, I finally have kind of learned as I've done this for a while, don't wait on me. If you guys feel like you're not in a good place, get to where, where you are in a good place. So with that, you're Seminole storm spotters and thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, right. We have to talk to Ernie about his team. Oh. Guys, here's your, guys.
I'll get them.
I want, oh, you want one.
Okay.
Frank.
We also have April, for April twenty-twenty-five is recognizing autism acceptance month. Wanted to do it early because the, the day that it's recognized is actually before we'll meet next month. So I want to read that as well. Whereas autism affects an estimated one in forty-four children is a complex disorder that affects each person differently, resulting in unique strengths and challenges. And whereas autism can cause challenges with verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and repetitive behaviors, and can affect anyone regardless of age, race, ethnicity, gender, and socioeconomic background. And whereas autism is often accompanied by medical conditions that impact quality of life. And whereas a comprehensive collaborative approach will help to advance research providing a better understanding of the many forms of autism, while strengthening advocacy efforts and ensuring access to services and resources throughout the lifespan. And where early, whereas early diagnosis and intervention tailored to individual needs can have lifelong benefits easing the transition to adulthood and fostering greater independence. And whereas each person and family affected by autism should have access to reliable information, support, and opportunities to live up to their greatest potential. And whereas the city of Seminole is honored to take part in the annual Observance of Autism Awareness Month, World Autism Day to address, address the diverse needs of individuals and families affected by autism. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jeff Griffin, do hereby proclaim April twenty-twenty-five as Autism Acceptance Month and April third, twenty-twenty-five is World Autism Day in the city of Seminole to increase understanding and acceptance of people with autism spectrum disorder. And we have one more that's, that I wanted to bring, bring in. You know, we went through a pretty cold spell a while back. I mean, it was, it was freezing and cold. And wouldn't you know it, we had a water line break. And we had three gentlemen that went out in the cold. It was let me get back to my notes where they're not all messed up. It is all messed up still. Okay, right. So, and one, it's, you know, it's always a risk when you thank specific people out of a group of people because they're going to feel left out. Well, they do good work and, and, you know, show up every day. But, you know, for a night that these guys went out when it was seven degrees and in the water fixing a water line, you know, that's, that's tough work. It was on Tuesday, February eighteenth, and they worked in those cold conditions to repair a water main break. So I would like to introduce those three workers, Donnie Schaefer, Ryan Groch, and Carrie Morrison. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
For your work. We, we really do appreciate it. And I know that was a rough night. All right, with that, we will move on to public hearing. Public hearing to discuss the United States Department of Agriculture Community Facilities Grant Application for a walk-in freezer at the Heritage House. So we will open public hearing.
Getting directed by COVID. I'm sure y'all would hear me, but I sound like I'm ready to play. So my job is pretty easy tonight. I'm Christine Mitchell. Chris, please. I have the privilege of owning and operating this seed corporation. And we are both a grant writing organization as well as a nonprofit. So when all you know what broke loose here a few years ago, we got a flux of applications. What our organization does is we give twenty-five-hundred-dollar grants to individuals who need to start or maintain a positive trajectory. We don't care how much money you made. We don't care where you're from. We don't ask all those questions. We just want to see positive growth in the state of Oklahoma. And we were awarded a contract through the USDA to provide technical assistance and training to Seminole County as a result of the work we did with our nonprofit during the storms and the major disaster declaration. So excuse me. We contacted Seminole. Absolute privilege. Very privilege. I have worked all across the state of Oklahoma. And because it sounded like this, I just can't go work anywhere else. And, and I grew up in Nittica, so it makes sense, right? But you guys are beyond blessed, whether you know it or not. But Ms. Samantha Stanfield has been an absolute privilege to work with. She knew where every document was. We didn't have to chase anything down. I wasn't crawling through basements, which I have done with Waiters One. I wasn't begging the Secretary of State to prove to me that they were not at town when evidence wasn't there. And it's a lot of work to write a grant. No matter the program, no matter the local, state, or federal entity you're writing it for, this particular grant is not big. But this is the paperwork that went into asking for a little over twenty thousand dollars. And this is your official copy, by the way. Everything is broke down, what I like to say Barney level with labels. You will, if you are ever audited, if you ever have a question, if there's administration question, call me. I will handle it for free. And this particular grant was broke down. I said twenty, and it wasn't even that much. It was ten, I think.
Yeah. And with USDA and, uh, those three.
Correct. So what we did to finish our commitment to Oklahoma and to Seminole County as a whole is the seed corporation is going to cover the match for this grant. And, and so the USDA, we hope, will pay to have the walk-in freezer repaired. The seed corporation will cover the match for that grant. And, and that will conclude our work for Seminole County as a result of Stitt and former President Biden, nobody throw anything at me. Former President Biden's major disaster declarations for this county. And that's about it. But your, your ladies that I had the privilege to work with, I, I seriously can't stress this enough. I got my masters at OU. I've been doing this since I was eighteen years old. I got my first grant at OU when I was eighteen. I'm a, a lot older than that now. And very, very rarely do I get the privilege to work with a community that has everything together, is responsive, is quick to get things signed. I heard the voice, but who's Mr. Crabtree? I have to brag on this gentleman because it's a lot of paperwork. It really is. USDA is paperwork heavy. I would rather write an EPA grant or an EDA grant than a USDA grant. This poor man, I bothered him. I did not know how many times. I finally just stole his email address because I felt so bad bothering her. Within twenty-four hours, like clockwork, every time that I had a request or a question, they just came through amazingly. And you guys are very, very, very blessed to have people like that that cares much about your community as they do. So it was a complete privilege for me to be able to work with you guys and have, I'm always here in the future if you need me. I don't charge anything if you're Oklahoma unless you want me to write like a really big federal grant, and then I want at least a kidney. Other than that, here is your completed copy. I will drop this and give this to Ms. Samantha. Has everything, including all of your final printouts for acceptance, and that it was a hundred percent approved with all documents one hundred percent in order. So I even printed all of those forms and included them so that you would have them. But just to
I think it jumped out.
That makes me feel better. Thank you. And so just a little FYI, these are all public record, as you know. I mean, you guys have been approving payments from different grant funding agencies all evening since I walked in at least. But you're more than welcome to read this. It's super entertaining. If you need a nap, right up your alley. This is it. So any questions or anything I can do?
Well, one, I want to thank you, feedback that you provided from the help you received from, from the city employees because that's good for us to hear and it's good for the citizens to hear. You know, they're, they're kind of hid back in an area where they're not seen. But they do a lot of hard work.
They really do. And I was privileged to meet Isak Carley, Isak Carley. And who is handling a lot of the disasters that and my background is writing legislation and, and just doing a lot of work with seniors and of tribes and different things. She was kind of in a, in a learning curve when I met her. I was able to send her a lot of resources and she has just taken them and run with them. I've gotten contact calls from different tribes, different nonprofits across the state that she is really out there doing the very best she can do to help people. And, and I got her in touch with some folks. So all of the people that live within your community that are Chickasaw or Choctaw will get free storm shelters. They don't have to pay a dime. So that's nice. And, but she's been wonderful to work with too. But I have to tell you, she embarrassed me. And it will be a really quick story because y'all are efficient. So I was in Bowleg, Oklahoma and in literal muck boots, stopping through a varnish, looking for a survey sign. And the mayor pulls up to me and her name is Carla Presley, very nice lady. And I've worked with Carla for several years now. And she was like, Chris, what are you doing? And I'm like, listen, things had to be done. So we were chit-chatting and she said, I gotta tell you something. And I said, okay. And she said, I got chewed out over here. And I said, I haven't done anything today. And she said, no, I did. I got lectured by my daughter that, you know, not all people with tattoos were mean. She had met a lady with tattoos that, you know, talks real oaky. And she's just got lots of tattoos, but she was just the nicest thing. And she gave all kinds of help. And I said, even talked to anybody in Bowleg today. Like, I don't her daughter is hardly. I know, I really like your daughter. And I said, is she super committed? And I said, is she super committed? Because I would love to hurt her. And she goes, she likes her daughter, Chris. And I'm like, all right, I'll go back to the bitch now. Anywho, I'm going to hand this off to get out of your hair. But it truly, truly a privilege. If I should get future contracts, I'll, I might request Seminole County just so I can keep her. She was that wonderful. And and thank you so much for not, you know, being a little upset by my, I didn't email you to midnight, do I normally do that?
She has for a lot of signatures, but it's okay.
Yeah, a lot of signatures.
She just knows where my office is.
Well, I truly appreciate it. I did it in less than 24 hours, thanks to y'all being able to give me everything I needed, which is unheard of in the world of grants. So truly appreciate it and thank you for your time. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
And that will close the public hearings. We'll move on to approvals and acceptances. Bid to item one. Consideration and possible action to approve the low bid of $26,143.55 from Okefenokee Fence Company for construction of a fence at the new Boomtown Playground Complex. With 100% of the funding provided by a grant from the Adidas Foundation. Roll call, please.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under current business, item two, discussion regarding a request by the Seminole State Educational Foundation for the City of Seminole and/or a city authority to be a conduit for the bond financing of the Ryan Crawford Sports Complex. Any conduit bonds would be very limited risk to no risk. The lack of risk is due to the fact that the college is leasing the complex and the foundation has substantial liquidity, thereby providing debt service with no city collateral. Presentation by Seminole State College Foundation members and Randy Nelson, financial advisor.
My name is Randy Nelson. I'm a financial advisor and work for the city on outstanding bond issues over the years. We've been working since last fall with some junior college foundation. Schnell, we have President of the Foundation. President of the Foundation. So we've worked together on a potential transaction to help the foundation. Got a tax balloon. We could issue taxes in bonds, but we have to go through a public trust to create the tax exemption on the obligation. Trying to lower their debt service and making a better transaction than economic limits. So I'll let Mark talk a little bit about what we're trying to do and then fill in the gaps.
Thank you for allowing us to present to you and see the some of you have seen the, the complex, been able to tour it. Recognize the impact that it brought to Seminole, to the college, to the foundation. When we started this project almost nine years ago. COVID came, increased our costs dramatically in order to get it completed. Financed all that, most of that, we didn't raise money, but we have payments today that through this refinancing will allow us to lower those payments, save us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, billions of dollars over the life of the term of the bonds, potential bond. Which will allow us to use a lot of the money that we do raise at the foundation to go back to scholarships, which is one of our primary goals as far as what we do for the college. We would like you to consider being able to use this through one of the authorities in order to help get this refinanced done. It will be something that the city has done before with the college back in the dormitory about 25 years ago. Was built, the bonds were issued through that process in order to build that dorm. Those paid off in 20 years. We're looking at the same thing on this one, about a 20-year term in order to refinance. The foundation's committed to, you know, a fundraiser over the next eight years or so in order to reduce it any further. Open to any questions you have as far as the complex is concerned, the refinancing thing that could.
Mark, I might add too, from a city standpoint, we're going to be a conduit in this transaction, which means it's the foundation's obligation. Obligation to make the payments. We need to go through a public trust, an intellectual, talk to the city about using one of their other trusts to use as our conduit. So the city's original riskiness is zero. Only risk we'd have is if something did happen and it's a fault, the trustee bank and the foundation would have to work that out. Kind of complimentary, but there's nothing important to do. It's the trustee bank that takes care of all those rules. But overall, it's just being a conduit, financial liability in this transaction. So I'll put those bonds out there. If you talk about the USDA, it's the bond center. You totally got there. Logical step, city council staff.
And the foundation would be there to, we still have, the financial liability still falls to us. Resources.
So back in, in too much of your business, maintenance on the facility. Is that, is this, is this needed as well to help kind of maintain?
Yes, it will free up funds for us to do ongoing maintenance. There goes debt service. So we do have plans and we've done a lot of updates since we went into this project. We've added stuff for the baseball complex. We've added stuff for Adidas Foundation with three grants from them. We built a new storage building on the, on the complex. We've added stuff for the soccer buildings in the complex there. So yes, ongoing maintenance still be in the white foundation. The refinancing of the debt will provide us more of those funds in order to keep making those improvements.
Now refinancing, we're currently at a prime rate plus scenario.
Today, we're at the prime plus.
Plus one, so that's probably a nine and a half. We expect these bonds to be fixed rates somewhere in the mid fives. So there's, there's this issue. Using to get this thing done for a public trust.
So Steve, would this need to be handled through the council or again through one of our others? And this, again, if we choose to do that, it would be probably a special meeting required.
Yes. Yes, well, we would have to select a, an authority to run it through. I think there's still a couple of que, how much is the bond? And what is it going to save you? And can there be any repairs? I, I know that my crews have been out there. We work together very well. And they've noticed some undercutting under some of the backfields. I don't know if that can be rolled into a bond or what can be done.
Construction funds outside the address, that backfill stops. And we still have some of that money available. If needed, we may request to add it to this one. But at about eight million, about eight and a half, so getting a couple hundred thousand in terms of over 20 years. Danny Morgan's already working on the backfill.
Okay.
I think there's no doubt. You guys provide a lot of economic impact to that facility. So I don't have a problem.
Well, this is just discussion.
Right? I'm just saying, I, I'm, I like.
I mean, I think we're all thrilled about the, the complex. I mean, the number of kids it serves is just, it's amazing. So I, I would think that at this point, again, I would think we'd need to have a meeting set up for the council to be able to discuss further and take action.
Great. We'll also address some of the questions regarding a Parks and Recreation Authority type on item number 11. Chris, if you don't mind hanging out for a little while.
We have a question.
So I guess my first one is to Steve. Is this, is this typical? Is this something we've done before? If we have did it, was there ever any liability or anything that came back in a negative way to the city?
Yes, it has been done before. The Economic Development Council actually backed or provided flow-through funding for the dormitory. The first dormitory that you see next to the Haney Center. So it has been done before. It was, I would call it extremely successful. In terms of liability, no. We didn't see anything. Even when the kids in the dorm misbehaved, we didn't see anything, so.
And then so we, so we still need to establish which public trust it will come under. We're not there yet.
We're, this was just discussion. We wanted to gauge your level of interest. If this is something you guys would be willing to move forward with, then I'll get to work and we'll, we'll identify the proper authority. We've already discussed, Chris and I in particular. By the way, this is our, our longtime bond attorney that's with us tonight, Chris Byram. Randy Nelson has done several deals with us on the financial advisor side. But we've had this discussion already, whether or not it might be a good thing to have a new authority established. I think the thing that makes it attractive to him and to the financial advisor in particular is that the Seminole Utilities Authority is a known quantity. They have let bonds before, paid them well, well-rated. We create a new authority, it's a new guy on the street with no track record. So we'll discuss a little bit more under item 11 on that.
Um, I guess my next question is, when, when does the seed be done? I know that you want to get it from nine to five probably as quickly as possible. So what is the timeline?
You know, the next step would be identifying a public trust. Having the public trust call meeting, having city adjournments, since we're waiting for the committee on the cell phone. So, you know, once we get it kind of a knot forward tonight, we'll be working with staff to get a public trust picked out. Smith, but and then get meetings called in the city council is the issuer of the public trust will also have. So once that happens, we can start documenting preparation in the market if we need stuff for that and hopefully have this thing done.
Okay. And then just one last thing. So, Mark, what I heard you say was that kind of the end goal is to save money. Right? And that money would be put towards just a whole array of things, but including scholarships, right? So that one.
The foundation's primary assist the college in raising scholarship funds. So we provide a lot of funding back to the college for scholarships. This project is kind of I don't have a complete hold on it, but it's, it's reduced the amount of scholarships that we get. So freeing up money again through refinance allows us to, to provide more scholarships. But we also work with the college and all types of projects, not just scholarships. So when you're saving several hundred thousand dollars, that goes a long way to scholarships. And part of the refinancing is reimbursing some of the money that we had to take out of the scholarship funds in order to complete the project. So that provides those funds back to the foundation for scholarships.
So I think that's where my interest is piqued there because we have, we have to look at what we have in common, right? And what we have in common is our constituents are your students. So if this savings could equal at some point more scholarships available to our constituents, I think it's a great partnership. Thank you. That's all I have there.
Thank you.
I just, I just need a little bit of clarification. Your question about when is the meeting or what? Are you wanting?
When do they need this, I think is what I was asking. When do they need this fund?
Okay. Or, or you prefer expedited or would you like it next, next month, city council agenda?
I don't have.
I prefer expedited. I think that's in their best interest.
Yeah. I think that'd be great.
That's, that gives me a little bit of direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, Lana has agreed to umpire the city council versus the.
We'll move on to item three. Consideration and possible action to approve the annual interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Seminole and Seminole County. Approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item four. Consideration and possible action to approve replating the parks addition to change lot sizes and directions to accommodate 42 new homes in the Sunview Park Development.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, direct your attention to the screens. This is near the roundabout. You will recognize that the, the new homes that are, are being constructed there. This is reducing some of the lot size requirements. The Board of Adjustment is, is fine with it and passed it, agreed with it. So we're just asking for your blessing on replat.
Do you have a picture of the home? In the, in the description, that basically you're going from angled lots to more straight lots, which is that correct?
Beautiful brick homes.
Pushing to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jake.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five, consideration and possible action regarding continued use of the city's current mass notification system.
Here we go. Okay, so one of the things that we get complaints about at, at City Hall is the constant notifications that are going off. And, and so I, I've asked Sean to look into options. What can we do? So the first thing he did was a survey. And here are the survey results. We had, Sean, you want to take over or you want me to do it?
Go ahead. So currently use a company called Regroup for a mass notification system. We've had them for probably five years now. We use them for notifying severe weather, water main breaks, things like that. We've kind of been, it's kind of started out, we were looking at potentially replacing with another company. And it kind of rolled into, well, are we getting, are we utilizing this enough? Is this something that we need to continue using? This led to the survey that we put out. We put that survey out probably a month ago, maybe. Posted on the front page of our website. Posted on Facebook. We bought ad space for Facebook. We boosted the votes, basically. And I think at the end of it, we got 11 responses back. As far as. Of the 11 responses is about 75%. Various reasons. We didn't get a lot of, we didn't get a lot of feedback from that. The post itself, you kind of see the numbers, the kind of engagement that we got. People seen it and they just weren't, they didn't seem interested in. It's kind of where we're at now.
Might talk a little bit about some of the other companies that do this type and the cost that is associated with it.
Currently Regroup, it runs us about $4,400 a year. It gives us a set number of messages that we can put out. I believe it's 250,000 total messages. We're actually going past that. They've been gracious enough to try to float that for us and let us keep doing that. But we've come to a point where we might start charging some more. So we're, we're kind of hitting the ceiling there with them. I've looked into a couple of different companies. They all look promising. They all provide the same kind of resource that Regroup does. I've looked into a couple of different companies. They all look promising. They all provide the same kind of resource that Regroup does. They're a little bit more expensive. One I was really interested in, it was a similar idea, about a thousand dollars more per year. But we were also looking at about a thousand dollars on top of that for the initial setup, just to import all the data that we have now as far as things like that. So there's, there's plenty of options out there. Kind of where we're at now is probably utilizing the way we should.
Yeah. And that's, that's kind of what we were asking of you guys is get with your constituents. I, I've talked to many people that just deleted it. They were tired of getting the Saturday morning at 11. Tornado, hey, it's going to go off at noon. There are groups out there, Sean didn't mention this, but there are some of the notification ability to, let's say we have a water main break in Northwood, that we can draw a fence around Northwood and only notify Northwood residents rather than the whole city gets the notification. So what we're after, we don't want to spend forty four hundred dollars if nine people are, are, is it nine or 11?
It was 11 when we pulled.
If, if it's 11 people that are paying attention to our mass notifications, that's probably not a good investment. So we need to do something different. We would like for you guys to, to help us. Help us get the word out and, and we need information. We need feedback. Have you already deleted the app or, or are you, are you hearing anything? Let us know what we're doing, right? What we need to improve.
Well, I, I think, I think we need something because of storms.
Yeah. Is there a way to do one that's for the severe weather and then have another one that people can sign up for if they want to know these other alerts?
They do.
He has done that way? Okay. I get all of them.
One, one thing I felt and I mentioned, it's up there in FEMA. And we, we were kind of looking at alternatives and one that our office came across is FEMA. Right? You can download that app and it'll do notifications for sp- severe weather in your area. So that's potentially an option for that.
Yeah, but you can get apps on your phone that do the same thing, but it's not the same as a tornado warning for your local spotters.
Most cell phones go off automatically with that one, the warnings issued.
Do y'all get a lot of calls at C Hall without people even looking at the stuff saying, hey, what I got low pressure here? And they don't pay attention to the deal. I mean, that's one thing that I'd be concerned with too, is if you're getting a bunch of calls and people aren't even, like you say, aren't even used.
Yes, we do get calls regardless of what we do on the mass notification. So that, that's really what prompted the, the discussion between the staff was, is anybody looking at this? You know, that's already, we just put that out 15 and 30 minutes ago. Your water will be back on at by 4:00 PM. And then we get a, a slot of calls, hey, we're not, what's the matter with our water? So.
It's not preventing anything, so it wouldn't be a big loss.
Well, and, and part of that, it's a hard sell because if and when they do sign up for that, because their water went out on Park Street, they get eight the next week that are, you know, that it doesn't apply to them. So we're, we're really considering going to a more, an app or something that is better sectioned to make.
There's, there's geofencing options in there. They've not set up grand. There are limitations there. They, they have to know your address, of course, so. With, if, if we were to go to another one, there's companies out there that'll let you build groups and let people sign up for specific groups. So if somebody's not interested in tornado alerts, there's nobody to sign up. And Regroup may do that, just have to get into this, you know, super app. But that's from what I've learned on this is that's what I'm. Now you got a group for tornado. You got a group for low water. You got a group for, you know, people to join and lead.
So really our task is to figure out who are citizens ones.
Is it a convenience or an inconvenience? And are they paying attention? I, I don't know. Ernie, do you know how many people originally signed up?
Well, originally it was probably, I don't know, 1,800, 2,000, but I can, I lived through this. We actually, Sharon and I actually created a non-emergency group. Everybody was leaving themselves out of the emergency group because of the water main and the siren. Sean has a great idea. Sharon and I created the siren notification because she was getting complaints that were setting the sirens off and some of these people that experienced PTSD were bothered by it. Well, as Sean said, we can go in there and create a group just for those folks. But all of a sudden, instead of sending it out to 2,000 people, we can send it out to A, 10, 11, every Saturday 11 that the test is at. One of my problems, and Sean and I talked about this, is geofencing. What, what we need as consumers or as a city is we need the geofencing to get, to be like FEMA where it's, it's a phone location sensitive. Right now, most of the folks have signed up for our mass notifications through the text to join. The only thing I get in text to join is their cell phone number. Okay. And then if they sign up, you've noticed my ads over the years, I've had, you can do the non-emergency water or emergency or, or emergency notification. I almost always put them in the emergency. They sign up for water notification, I put them in the emergency. And the geofencing tried that when it first came out. And as I told Sean, we drew a circle around, I can't remember the location. The geofencing popped up like 11 addresses. Well, we knew there were more than 11 people in that area, but we didn't have an address. We do not, we do not have the database. Even when we reversed the 911, as we originally set this up, we just took what 911 had and they imported it into us. And I can tell you, my little old ladies, which they're all starting to die off, you know, a lot of them don't ever turn on their cell phone. Their kids make them carry one, but they're dependent on that old landline to ring in the middle of the night and wake them up. We'd all love for everybody to have a way with the radio. One other thing that hit me in this discussion and Sean and I talked about this a ton of time. On the May, uh, you know, the May 4th tornado, in the following days, we put out 11 mass notifications talking about shelters and supplies and services that the city was offering, the utility companies and whatever. So it's not limited. And we used the emergency group today. We sent that notice out. We used the emergency group, not the non-emergency. And we sent those notices out because we knew that people may or may not have internet access to look at the web page. We even went as far as putting up, you remember, pieces of plywood with handwritten signs on them. At the conference last week, the big boys claimed that 66% of the people get their notification through some sort of mass notification system. Now that's inclusive of either the weather service app or the FEMA app or a local app.
So I have a question. So I guess when you set these up, you were doing it off the address. The person would have to give you their address first, right? Or is there a way to set it up where it would just alert the, the phones that are in that area? Like if you were signing up for mass tests, can you do it off the phone location only, not necessarily? I don't know that everybody would want to give their address. They already think they're followed. So if you give somebody your phone number and your address, I think some people that would make them think, oh, they're, they're following me. They're going to know where I'm at, what have you, or they know where I live. But just curious if you could set it up off of a phone location without someone having to give you their address. So for instance, if you were at Walmart, you had a condition where you had to get to the restroom and there was no water, but you were at Walmart and all of a sudden it says, hey, this side of town's without water, well, you would know, hey, I got to do something. Now, I'm just using an example, but can you do that? I, that's probably a question for me. It's, I'm just curious.
If Sean was doing the shopping with City Plus and some of these others, the geofencing has to have that address.
Has to have your address.
It doesn't follow you. So you may put your home in, but it's not going to geofence you at work. So you may or may not get the notification when you, when you go to work unless you request your both locations.
It'd be, it'd be so convenient if they could do that because if you are at work and you're like, hey, without water, you get a notification saying you're in this area and there's no water right now.
Well, we know they can do that off your phone advertising.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't know if there's one of these groups that will do that. I just think you're going to get this certain set of people who don't want to give you their address for that reason. They think they're being followed. Or their location from that. Yeah. So we know from geofencing that your phone is from wherever, but you were in this area on that day. Because that's how we track, track it, right? So I just didn't know if there was a software system that would do that off where your phone was located. So if you sent it to Northwood, where, where I live, everybody in Northwood, if your phone was in that area and you were signed up, would give that text versus having to know some of that address. To me, that would be much more convenient than you having to get everyone's addresses. That would just, to me, be a process that not everyone may comply with.
From my experience, not a lot of real particular about track.
I don't know. Of course, you'd have to agree to, you'd have to agree to the notifications somehow, you know, but just a thought. I just didn't know if there was one that actually did that.
Yeah. Any other questions? So at this point, yes, no action to be taken other than us to do some monitoring.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We move on to item six, consideration and possible action to approve closing maintenance fee from Broadway South to Osage and Broadway from Mill Phillips East to Fourth Street. The maiden Oklahoma festival to be held on Saturday, April 5th, 2025, is recommended by the permit board. No approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item seven, consideration and possible action to approve the transfer of funds from the Reynolds Wellness Center's maintenance fund in the amount of $79,979 to reimburse operating budget funds for the following maintenance and repairs expended or planned during the current fiscal year. One, replace the fire alarm system at a cost of $39,944 to H and H Alarm on 7/23 and 24. Two, repairs to HVAC unit RTU 1 after a lightning strike at a cost of $30,035 above insurance proceeds received. Three, estimated cost of $10,000 to install ballards at the front entrance to the city.
Do you have a question? Are these one, two, three? Was this part of our capital improvement program?
Great question. So the, can I give you a long answer in a short amount of time? Okay. So you may recall when the Reynolds Foundation granted us $8 million, 8.2 million dollars to build the facility, they required the city to post a million dollars in a reserve fund. Well, that money's been drawing interest and, and the intent was always to reinvest that million dollars in a capital way so that over time it continues to look new. So the, the funds that we're talking about tonight would be drawn from that reserve fund. So it's not coming out of the city's capital fund.
That's a good explanation. Thank you. Just one other question, and this is kind of related, not really related to this, but there's a, there's a, a board or a committee for the Wellness Center, correct?
Yes.
As long as I've been on the council, I've never been to one of those meetings and I've never seen a report or anything from them. Is that something that we could look to in the futures? I would love, I have lots of questions about hours that they operate, the equipment, the staffing. And I just, I don't know really where to direct those. I don't want to interrupt them while I'm there. But I would like to hear from either that, the board or, yeah, I would just like to hear.
We can do that.
Some interaction.
I, I avoid having them at the council meeting because Matt is very long-winded, but he's a preacher. But to answer your question, we will have it on next month's agenda. You bet.
Thank you, Scott.
And, and I should point out that the grant that we received from the Reynolds Wellness Foundation required that that be a separate, they wouldn't let us put the city council as the board. They wanted it a separate board that functioned and approved expenses separately.
And just so you know, the mayor has a seat on that, plus one of the councilors. I'm, Jeff and myself are also on that board. We can oversee that. Jeff, I mean, Matt does a really good job at that place, I'll just tell you that. So.
Yeah, no, I'm not questioning if they're doing a good job. I would just, I would like some interaction. I have some questions.
He's been pretty concise with the people, sir. It's been, we haven't had that in the past. So as it is right now, it's being run very well.
Sure.
From the backend. So if that's any confidence to you, but yeah, it's, it's, he's done really well with that. So I've, I've been proud of that hire. So not just because I know him personally, but I've been there for quite a few years. So you've had some people who haven't done as well of a job. He's done well with that. So, and he's always open to suggestions. So if you got one, he's an open, he'll hear anything. So, yeah, it'd be great to hear.
You bet. We'll put it on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
So we had an item on the table.
Would approve.
Roll call, please.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item eight, discussion regarding an update on the family entertainment center.
So I've never given birth to a child, but I'm right there with this family entertainment center. It's, it's a beast. It is really difficult to get through all the detail. If I could, just advance it one more, Sharon. So this is one of the renditions of the logo that we've been through with the, the youth city council. And the Heyday Group has been fantastic. They, they made a professional presentation to the youth city council and they ate it up. The, the young, the high school students really enjoyed being treated like adults. And it, it was a success. This is one of the renditions. Of course, we'll have you guys finalize, but it looks pretty cool. Next. So this is the 95% plan out, the exterior rendition of what this is going to look like. The, the road there in front is Highway 9. So it's going to sit right there in a premier location right across from the high school. And the floor plan looks like this, or excuse me, the site plan. So the, you'll see the parking lot where it lays and, and at the bottom of that screen is Highway 9. And you'll also see that there's been an, an effort to make a drive-through for the restaurant. So they're not just going to be selling, you know, I wouldn't, bowling alley food. It's going to be a, a really well-received restaurant. I, I think you're going to enjoy what you have from the Heyday folks. Here's our 95% plan. We should have our 100% plans ready Friday?
By Friday?
Yeah. Okay. So 100% plans will be ready by Friday. And you'll notice that we've got all the bowling lanes. The blank space you see there in the middle is for the arcade games and the reclamation center. So Corey, you can win a big bear for your date. And at the back is going to be a, I would call it a quasi patio because it'll be heat and cooled, but it'll have roll-up doors so that we can enjoy. Because it'll be heat and cooled, but it'll have roll-up doors so that we can enjoy the canyon that lays beneath that. So there's about a 40-foot drop right behind that, that, uh, that patio. Not close enough so that the kids can fall in it. All right. But it is going to be pretty scenic. It'll be a great, great venue. We, we're so excited. So here we go. And here's our timeline. This is updated. So, uh, it's a little bit small on your screen. But I can tell you that the hundred percent plans are due by the 17th. There we go. And, uh, we're ready to start bidding on or about the 27th. And begin construction, April the 29th. I think that was Sharon's birthday present to me. So. So we'll get started. We're ready. I think we're, we're very close on the budget. We've, we've probably got a little bit left to do on what we're calling value engineering. You know, trying to save a little bit of money here, reduce the quality of the chairs, save a little bit to get back inside of our budget. But we're going to get there and we're, we're ready to start. The bidding should start very, very soon. Any questions?
Good job.
All right.
Thank you. Item nine, discussion and action regarding engaging Clark Kimball for legal review of the management agreement between the City of Seminole Utilities Authorities. And Heyday for the operations of the family entertainment center.
So I work with lawyers that, I don't want to call them chicken, but they kind of are. Apparently when we let a bond in this type to build the family entertainment center. That puts us in a special category so that Chris and Brad are a little bit nervous about putting a management agreement in place with that. Without having it reviewed by somebody that does that a lot. Uh, so, and the reason for that, and I'm speaking for them, you guys chime in. But the reason for that is because it could jeopardize the tax exempt status of that. So we have to be very careful. We, we think we've got a tentative of ma- management agreement. But we would like Mr. Kimball to really pore over it, say, hey, you're going to need to take that section nine A out. Because that puts you into a jeopardy situation. So. I'm asking that we be allowed to go ahead and retain Clark Kimball. Help me. Anything else?
What would be the, what would be the, the cost of that? What would be the cost of it?
Yep. I'm trying to remember. It's $10,000. Yep. And, and I've got the engagement. I think it just came in today, but, uh, the engagement letter is in my email box. I haven't had a chance to pull that off. But, um, so we're looking at a $10,000 review of our document and. I think it's probably money well spent.
So then I guess my next question for that would be, um, could we save 10,000 and have our city attorney do it? Or is, or you're not doing it because that's not your area expertise?
Yeah, Brad.
I tried to get Steve to let me do this. He said no way. It was at a, was that his, uh, it was $10,000 an hour, wasn't it? We need to have somebody look at this. It's tied into all the funding. It, it, it's better to spend the money upfront and rather than have a problem later on down the road that we would, we, we were going to have a lot more. Things bad that could happen. So we really need to do it on this. And I'm usually the one that'll tell you, you know, we can do it, we can't. When it gets, when it comes to bonds and financing and the way all this stuff ties in. I mean, we've been down this road before with SCDC and some, some, some nightmare situations. And I really don't want the council to have to, to, uh, face that. So.
Originally we had a city's own operator themselves. Hold it. Step aside and probably get a real operator like. That now brings in a manager, open management contract. And the IRS looks at those things pretty tight. So we haven't given a IRS review of the transaction. They do random reviews. We want to make sure we button this thing up right. So we don't have to, we're going to ask questions. You've got to pull up my management contract with my capital. It's happened and they can come in and declare the bonds tax-free. You don't need a headache. So. If we're worried about risk, we might go to the job we're worried about too. We need to have a real. The tax order and the policy and this stuff. Let's get a review of this and you know this.
Thank you.
Just coming out of the family entertainment center budget. Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Grace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yeah.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item ten, consideration and possible action to approve the lease agreement with the Seminoles State College Educational Foundation. For the use of the baseball fields located in 2803 Highway nine west for $16,000 effective from March 31st to June 21st, 2025.
So mayor, this was. This is for the, um, you baseball. Okay. So we, this will be what? The second or third year that we've done this is a third year? And I remember the first year, it was significantly, significantly less than this, right? See John shaking and said, yes. Do we know what we paid the first year?
Twelve, I believe.
So it's gone up $4,000 in just that short amount of a time. Do we know why? No.
Uh, I do not, I do not have an answer for that. I would suspect that. Probably the electric bill has. Had an impact on that. So.
They also did spend some funds and actually build a bathroom facility for the use down there. There was not a bathroom facility. So I believe they built that. There's a whole bathroom facility on that section of the building. It was not there before. So I don't know if that's part of the, that was part of the cost, I'm sure. Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Grace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
John Kramer.
abstaining.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 11, discussion and possible action regarding creating parks and recreation authority or similar board within city of Seminole.
Uh, there, we've had some discussion about this internally and with a couple of city council members as to. Do we need to go ahead and set up a, a new authority? Ironically, we've already got a Parks and Recreation Authority. I've had Chris look at it, but, but it's not practical for us to retool. That, right? So.
That's correct. Uh, Mayor, city council members, Steve, you sent that to me a year ago.
Right.
It was actually before we issued the, uh, family recreation center. Take a look at that. That trust was set up in the nineties.
Yes.
And it kind of just laid dormant and it was, it's kind of a specialized trust. And after reviewing it to resuscitate that thing to get it to be a legal entity. It required a bunch of hoops to jump through. Be honest with you, I'm not sure you could get it there. Um, and especially when you start talking about issuing eight million dollars behind it. My recommendation to Steve was one of two things. If you wanted to, if you're, uh, you absolutely decide you want to do a separate trust. Uh, I would recommend setting up a fresh, a new fresh trust. And then your other option would be to use an existing trust. City has, I believe, six public trusts. City SMA, Wellness Center, CDC. I'm going through, I think you have about six set up. You reach a point where you're kind of going, you're tripping over yourself. And it, you know, your auditors start looking at it and it starts costing you a little bit more every time you have your audit done. Because they've got to account for a separate entity. Uh, you haven't placed utilities. The SUA issued the, uh, uh, family entertainment center bonds through that entity. It is just a public trust. As you know, it previously held your utility system. That's been moved over and those utilities have been moved over to the SMA now. The SUA really is just a. Public trust that really has nothing, uh, has no assets. We did a conduit financing through the SUA to do the family entertainment center. That's the sales tax is collected, it's transferred over to utilities, um, utilities authority to pay the debt. And that's a conduit in that sense, because there's a sales tax dedicated to that. While we would be talking here would be, uh, if we used the SC, SUA, we would be looking at. Blowing funds coming from the foundation through the utilities authority to make the bond backs. The utilities authority would not be pledging anything. They don't have anything to pledge. So it'd be, it would be a, a conduit financing in a pure sense.
And so there's no issue with having both of those kind of going through?
No, not whatsoever. Um, in some respects, and I think Steve or Randy hit on it, the SUA, actually the SUA has been issuing debt for over 40 years. You know, I, I worked on the issue back in 93, the sales tax deal then. And it's been issuing that since it's a recognized name on the bond market. Local banks across the state see some no utilities where they go, yeah, I remember I bought some of those bonds 25 years ago. Um, it's recognized that. So, you know, so there you have it. I mean, whether you want to set up a new trust or use an existing, uh. Trust, which would serve the same purpose and essentially would, it doesn't have assets either.
Well, it wasn't just about that. It was one of the reasons I asked for it. One of the reasons I wanted to investigate and see how everybody felt about it. Like a recreation type authority is for our own park systems. Uh, such as our baseball field, which needs repairs that we can't come up with the money all at once to fix. To where, you know, we, we start moving maybe our park systems into that, uh, for instance, to the baseball field. We wanted to go borrow the money to redo the lights. We could do that through an authority that we can't do it through the city. And if we can budget that payment, you know, if we feel like five years, we can do it and pay it off, we can fix some of that stuff. You know, similar situation with maybe a swimming pool. It also came to mind again, I kind of let it go for a while, but it came to mind again when we found out that our, uh, the people who are running our golf course are going to be leased. If that isn't falling back into our lap to run, we may need equipment for the golf course, uh, you know, things of that nature. And I, I, I just made the inquiry because I was curious if it would be better to have a separate authority that could go out and do those things. For our parks or recreation types of things. So, I mean, it was, it was in addition to just, just the thing with the.
Sure. Absolutely. And see, I think that, that trust that we're referring to back from the nineties, I think it was called the Parks and Recreational.
It is. Yeah. It's got, I can't remember JD Wood and.
Kenny Pryor was in that.
Kenny Pryor and Rusty Bean and those are appointed in the document.
Yeah.
And it's not, they don't have a way to elect.
That's one of the aspects of it. Want to set it unique, that's kind of unique.
So if that was again, to be revised, but not for the bonding purposes. And does that change the difficulty of?
There wasn't a way in the document to replace those members. That, that was the problem.
That was a big problem.
So basically that would mean we would need a new. Trust created for them.
I, I was in college, by the way. Don't want you to think that I actually did that one.
Mr. America, some, somebody hit me up about the lights at the, or hit us up the other day about the lights at the, uh, the field. And I guess one of the reasons there, that they're, they're probably frustrated is because we can't use the fields out there on the weekends. And I guess that's when a lot of tournaments would take place for, for baseball for us. And so that would be a reason we need to get our lights, some gun about our lights. But then like I said, there, there are just other things that, that came to mind. Like I said, the golf course needing golf carts, equipment for the golf course, things like that, that we needed it. You know, we may have to, we may have to finance it to keep, to get, to continue it. So. Anyway, I, I, I also wanted to hear other, you know, other members, you know, uh, thoughts, you know.
So if you did that, I mean. I guess it.
And to find out if there's any benefits too.
It depends on if you see that group as taking over. What the current part does, but then they also deal with. Additional. Load of, as you're saying, you know. Handling the funds and money.
Well, it could be us that did it, just like our.
It could be.
Utilities, or we could, if we wanted it to be a separate entity.
So have it set up for the council, but still have it part. Board that you have now doing what they're doing.
We can set up another authority. I'll get the, the Thesaurus out for Parks and Recreation and we'll, we'll come up with a new name and set up a new authority.
So we can still set it up.
For the bonds.
Right. Yeah.
Anyway, just something I wanted to discuss with you guys and find out if it was even something that we needed to do.
Those are, those things are going to be dug through. The ones we have now.
Yeah.
I, I missed the comment.
I was just saying, um, unless we were to work it through one that we already had, but it doesn't really seem to fit. Some of the ones we have, unless we were, I mean, utilities authority doesn't seem to really apply.
Yeah.
To that. So.
Yeah. Even though we've got recreation under the utilities authority more and more. You're right.
Well, we could.
Yeah. But you're right. We'll, we'll think of a name. I don't, maybe it's the fun authority. Everybody would sit on it. Yeah.
Just. Years of experience, think about the acronym you're spelling out before you get the name. You might end up spelling a dirty word.
Chris, do we need to stand down that existing Parks and Recreation Authority? Do we need to dissolve that?
You know, that thing's just laying dormant. And you really don't need to do anything to it. It, it's not meeting. It doesn't have any funds. It's not even listed on your audits. It can just, you know, it's just out there. It doesn't really exist. I mean, it's just laying there dormant. You know, again, we can set up a new trust. It's for pleasure.
Sounds like it'd be easier to set up a new one than to do that one anyway. So.
Maybe something over time we can build a.
Yep.
Credit on that trust.
Maybe recommendations for a name.
I had a different one, but I can't, I can't remember what it was when I first, first talked about it.
We can come up with something.
Yeah. I like to challenge the staff, right?
There you go. We're, we're on it.
All right. Thank you very much. That helps us understand.
Once you have a name, we'll get it put together.
Item 12, discussion and possible action regarding possible funding sources to meet long-term debt requirements associated with construction with wastewater treatment.
Okay. So this is something that we've discussed, uh. Quite a bit, especially internally. I think I've visited with most of the city council. And that is how are we going to pay for our sewer plant, wastewater treatment plant? Uh, and next slide, please. So, um, just a quick refresher, especially for the crowd. I think the council pretty much all understands. But wastewater treatment plant has, has a combination of the 1930s, 1950s, 1970s technology. That's, that's about the way that it was updated. We tried to update a little bit in those years. And, uh, finally Department of Environmental Quality just shook their head and said, yeah, that, this is it. You're out of luck. So you've got to build a new sewer plant. We went out, hired wall engineering. So in 2020, wall engineering came back and, uh, they've got. So in twenty twenty, wall engineering came back and they've got a lot of experience building sewer plants and, and even water plants, among other things, pretty, pretty good firm. We've worked with them before. They came back, gave us a twenty-one million dollar price tag, says in twenty twenty dollars, you're going to spend twenty-one million dollars. We said, hey, let's go to the public, we're going to ask for a half cent sales tax to cover that twenty-one million dollars. And we did, and it passed. And the public was very gracious in doing that. Problem with that is it takes two years to get engineering on a sewer plant, two full years. So when we went out and did a competitive bid in late twenty twenty-three, the new plant cost forty-two million dollars instead of twenty-one million dollars. So, that, you know, I kind of checked around and that is consistent with what other people are seeing. Shawnee's went from fifty-one million to a hundred and four million. So the infrastructure projects are just getting ridiculously expensive. So where we're at right now, the USDA has graciously agreed to loan us forty-six million dollars, and only two million of the forty-six comes in the form of a grant. We were very hopeful that we would get about twenty million dollars in grant, but the federal gurus that go through our package said, hey, it looks like Seminole is really taking care of business and therefore you can afford to take a forty-four million dollar loan. Well, as a result, because we only have a half cent that has been earmarked to pay for the, the, for the project, we are going to end up, when we start making payments, we will be seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars short. So we need to have a good discussion, again, that we've had it before the council before, but we're, we're, what, what would you say, maybe forty percent through the project now?
Be done by the end of two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah, so we're, we're roughly forty percent into this, twenty twenty-six, we will start making payments. So I don't want to have any surprises, no one needs to be looking back over, saying you never told us what was going on. So we've got to make some tough decisions about how to come up with seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So I'm calling these options, really, they're more to put up there some thought provoking and discussion provoking thoughts. So the way that we come up with seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars might be to offer some staff cuts and operational cuts, defer any purchases such as ambulances, police vehicles, streets, water, sewer projects. And by the way, that's a forty-year loan, so we would have to defer for forty years buying ambulances and, and police cars. That's probably not going to be a, a good idea in total. Sales tax increase of a one quarter cent or one eighth of a cent, and I put up there kind of what those raise. Quarter cent raises four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, a one-eighth cent would raise two hundred and twenty-nine thousand and change. Additional services or additional sewer bill fees, twenty-one dollars per month would net seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, so that would cover the cost of the bond. I don't, and I'm not recommending that we go up twenty-one dollars on the sewer bill, but that is open to the city council to choose. An additional five dollars just as, to get, to be able to level that, five dollars would net one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So if you added five, that, five dollars to the sewer bill, you would net one hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So I'm calling these options, they're really, all, all I'm trying to do is demonstrate that you can stratify the funding. You can take pieces of each of those original options that I just showed you and, and kind of layer in, what do you think is going to be most comfortable to our people, to the citizens of Seminole? So option one would be to cut our staff by a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that would be through layoffs and not hiring positions that are open. Defer two hundred thousand dollars annually of street maintenance, sewer and water projects, ambulances, fire vehicle purchases, et cetera. Increase sewer rates by five dollars. Pass a one-eighth cent sales tax, which by the way, would still keep us under ten percent, and that would net seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So pretty much make up the payment that we need. Option two, again, this is a deeper cut into the staff, reduce staff with layoffs and not hiring existing or positions that might be open of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Defer street, parks, demolition, ambulance and police for two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars annually. And I, I should probably point out at this juncture that you're, right now, the city council, as you go into your C I P budgets and, and hiring additional staff to do things, you probably would be in the neighborhood of nine hundred thousand, maybe eight hundred, Jay, you better keep me safe here, eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand dollars available to you. So if you, if you cut two hundred and thirty-three thousand of street and ambulance and police, that would still leave you in the neighborhood of seven hundred thousand dollars to work with and do some demolitions if you want to and, and other things. In, in this option, you could increase the sewer bill by five dollars. This option would have no sales tax associated, and it would raise seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Option three, cut staff, a deep cut, three hundred and sixty thousand, pass the one-eighth and add five dollars to the sewer bill, pass a one-eighth sales tax, add five dollars to the sewer bill, and you're, you're going to get pretty much there, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. That's it.
You're doom and gloom.
No, 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 this is, the good news is, we'll all be able to flush our toilets.
That is good news. Thank you for that update, Steve. That is, is something that's going to be very important, that's going to have to be addressed.
Yeah, the thing is, is if we're going to have to do a sales tax, we're going to have to get on that pretty quick if we want the funds to start coming in in time to make the payments. So we're going to have to face whether that's the option sooner rather later.
Where are we at in terms of other cities from water? Are we below average, are we right there, are we high? I always hear people talk about woke, because it's really high. And having watched some apartments over there, they were, it was tremendously high, like you jump from five hundred bucks a month to about seven hundred.
Yeah.
Right before I quit doing that. So I don't know, I'm just asking where we are.
Yeah, the last survey that we did, we were lower middle, kind of right in the, especially for our population size, we're probably just a hair low.
Twenty dollars low then?
Not twenty dollars. I, I can redo the survey and get you some hard, hard numbers.
They could put in a toll booth at the roundabout.
Ow.
Twenty dollars for trucks.
The Griffin Roundabout?
That's a sexy circle. Or our attorney could actually accept the opinions of those trucks that.
I was thinking a tax at those bowling games you guys are.
You're going to. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I'll take any recommendations. I think it's probably time for us to start holding some public hearings, let the public get involved and, and especially, we're always concerned about fixed income folks. I would say in advance, I know we're going to get those thoughts, but the social security gives the cost to, you know, the, the consumer price index increases annually. So those are anticipated as their benefits grow, that, hey, you're probably, on your sewer bill is going to bump, your water bills are going to bump, so some of that is put into their social security.
City, the only good thing about the taxes.
We talked about it a little bit, but do, do you want to explain to them a little bit about why, you know, we originally talked about doing a property tax type thing, why we thought that that may not be such a great idea after all?
Chris?
Somebody want to explain that?
The G O bond on this project is not a good idea because.
I'm sorry, I can't, I didn't. The G O, the G O bond, why was the G O bond not a good idea?
I'm sorry, simply that function of your numbers, Randy ran the numbers. Your tax base is not big enough, your, your millage would go through the roof, okay, so you have to see them again, financing it now. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Were you sleeping on me again, Chris?
Steve, when you start talking, I'm getting those off.
Yeah, by the time, by the time we got into the millage, that would be significant enough to help us with the, the stratification of the financing and, and the fees that were associated with letting a G O bond, it, it just doesn't, doesn't fit well with what's going on.
Can you send that PowerPoint to us?
Sure. And I would also say that the two, I mentioned the two million dollar grant from USDA. If we were to do a G O bond, and I need your help on this, Sharon, check, make sure I'm, I've got this right. If we did something like the G O bond, they would take that money that we get from the G O bond and reduce the grant by the amount that we raised in the property tax. So that's kind of why.
And, and one more request, because I, I'm concerned about this because we've come such a long way over the last twenty years, since I've been on council, and we didn't have any money to do some of the street repairs, some of the stuffs we're doing with our parks, the line repairs that we do now every year out of funding without having to, you know, go to other sources and other means. That money was not there, and we finally got to where we can do that. And if we don't find some solutions to pay for this, all that money's going away, and we're going to be backed down, you know, back to having, you know, things that just aren't kept anymore, you know, the upkeep is not going to be there, money's not going to be there for it. So, so when I ask this, Steve, I'm serious, you think there's any way we can get your, your, your voice and get this slideshow, your voiceover put on that slideshow and kind of timed to what you just did for city council, so we can put that out to everybody, all the social media things, and maybe even text it to someone if we need to, because.
Yes.
I think we're going to sell this.
Yeah, I. Sean's pretty good at this type of thing. I, I think as long as we can turn off the comments after we post it, I think, I think it's doable.
Or you could just redo it in your office if you wanted to, or it's quiet.
Okay.
I don't think we're about a sales tax.
No, no.
We shared, we shared the debt with those people that are coming into town and buying things. Not all of it would be on us. Worse is just doing a sewer bill alone. But that's, we just, I'm sure people complain about our tax rate anyway, so.
Exactly, so I don't think it's going to be the sale, but.
Yeah.
But, but if they're confronted with a, a rate increase on their utility bills, they might, you know, have different.
Well, you know, possibility is motel room, additional tax on the motel room. Dedicated to, in the case. Maybe it'll increase with that addition. Anyway, just, I just.
We'll get there. I just want to put that out there, we'll have some public hearings and we'll try to get information piece out. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Steve. All right, with that, we'll move on to remarks and inquiries of mayor and council members. We'll start with board one, Larry Church.
Don't have much to say, I appreciate everything y'all do for us, keeping it straight. And just to tell the general public, being a, a council member, it's a real privilege to get to see how a good city works. Thank you.
Thank you. Board two, John Kramer.
Yes, thank you. Jeff, Eddie, service. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Eddie and my buddy Tim.
Well, I kind of forewarned it at the last one, I said how much I considered the privilege to be part of this group, but it was only for five years. Just saw it, I told Jeff earlier, thought it was odd that our ward's the only one that ever has, ever has an election. Seems strange. But good people, I know your all's hearts are in the right place. I know the sewer thing is not going to be an easy task. My one comment would be, make the bite once, if that's all, don't spread it out, don't make daggedy blast boulder. And I would like to say that appreciates that, Jay, Steve, Brad, and everybody has been most helpful for some of the silly questions that I asked during the time I've been here. I've been part of groups as well as I can remember, and I, I would say that this group by far has worked with most heart and concern of any group I've been part of. So I appreciate being part of that group. Thank you all.
Thank you. Board three, Cory Craptree.
All right, just a few things, if you guys haven't been to the backside of the donut shop, see that mural, that mural is amazing.
Yes.
That is a massive undertaking, and the fact they got that done and the time they got it done, it was pretty impressive.
Remarkable.
So if you guys have not seen that, really need to go by there and do that, and I think that is, what's that?
Ready cut four on the twenty-four.
Oh, okay, oh, they're in a ready cut four, that's cool. All right, on the twenty-four. I believe that that's part of a tour too, that Monarch, that artist has a, has a set of those across the state that you can actually get on, look at those, that's pretty neat. I was here at the municipal the other night for the Arts Council bingo. If you guys don't participate in the Arts Council, they are doing a lot of stuff at town.
They are.
Those people have some good hearts, they're, they're hard workers. I showed up and they did not expect to go from twenty or thirty people at the last bingo to about a hundred and twenty that they had the other night. So Kim and I jumped in and helped, and it was, it was just fun, with the fun, and they're doing great things, so support them when you can. Yeah, Eddie, you guys are great, man. I mean, I appreciate everything you've done. You've been a mentor to me for a long time, you were the first one when I got on council to kind of give me some guidance on, I appreciate that. So Tim's not here, I appreciate him too, I kind of have, want to miss hushing him a little bit, but it's sometimes a little, you said to calm him down, he's all right. But one other thing, Samantha, she mentioned the grant right, you do an excellent job, I'll just tell you. She does have to come to my office quite a few times, some of it's for Sharon, some of it's for her, but always kind of respectful, she'll sit and wait, oh, we've got somebody there, she'll, she'll wait for me to come back, it doesn't matter, but, and you always do it in a kind of respectful way. So for me, I appreciate that because as mayor, which it's not going to be a paid position for, for me either, but it, it means a lot to me that you're respectful in that way, that you're willing to wait and still get things done. So I was, I would just second what she said about you earlier, and so you do a great job. So I just wanted to say that publicly.
So thank you. Board four, Christine.
Same here, you guys have been great to work with, and I miss your presence here, but anyway, wish you guys well.
I'll, I'll come back in the audience.
You'll still come back? You'll, you'll have to.
Board four, Trace.
Ditto remarks, you guys have been special, and thanks to council for putting up the fence around the Boomtown Playground. I mean, that thing has been utilized beyond belief, and I'm glad the kids won't be running out the road now. That's about all, yeah.
Okay, well, mine's going to be a little longer, so, you know, I want to thank the citizens of Seminole, representing in me as a council member for ten years and mayor for four. You know, I grew up and worked in Seminole for forty-two and a half years. Giving back to the city of Seminole, the city I grew up in and love, in a positive way is all I wanted to do when I came on the council to serve. It makes me happy to see Seminole prosper. You know, volunteers, thank you to all. You know, volunteers, thank you to all the volunteers that have given and continue to give their time and talents to support the city. This also includes groups outside of the city volunteers. Without you, the community wouldn't be what it is. It is amazing to see all of the time, money, and love given back to this community and the kids. City staff, Red Carter, thank you for the guidance and openness during discussions we've had over the many years. The city staff has been great to work with, they've always been available to answer any questions I had. Your patience and helpfulness will not be forgotten. As we continue to see dilapidated buildings come down, I would like to thank our code enforcement department, James Moon and Amy Churchwell, and for their continued work in that area. The department heads, Bryant Baker, Public Works Director, Sean Carlisle, IT Director, Sharon Emmett, Community Development Director, Scott Childers, our fire chief, Merrick Ashby, our EMS Director, John Withers, Police Chief, Matt Pollack, Rentals Wellness Center Director, and Jay Cox, our City Clerk. You know, what a wonderful job that they have done. I lost my place. All right. From our city crews supporting each other as a team, to updates to our GIS information and security, from our grant writing and the great team they have assembled, our emergency services, and how well they have worked together. The Wellness Center, what a great asset to the city. That, that is, I know they are always looking for ways to improve, and a very important one, the passing of our annual audits. Want to thank you for your continued dedication to improving Seminole. I do need to give a special call out to Sharon Emmett for sharing her wisdom over the many years, and for helping me get the papers I needed when I wasn't really available to come down to City Hall. Thank you very much for that. And, you know, what can I say about Steve Saxon? Obviously, Steve is an all star, and I would have him on any team that I had. Steve has led the city through some tough times. Not only has he led, has he led the city, he's also driven the economic development we see today. I know he has worked months and years, many, many, many years, to see what we have going on today. Thank you, Steve, for your dedication to the city of Seminole. And finally, the city council, past and present, I watched and learned from some of the best. We didn't always agree, but I respected their opinion nonetheless. I only hope that I have served as well as them. I would like to thank the current council members for their willingness to serve and ask the hard questions. If unsure, we should ask. We should also be willing to listen to others' views and thoughts before making decisions. I know I have asked many questions for clarity before our meetings. You also shouldn't have an axe to grind. These meetings are for our city and our citizens. And thank you for your continued service. And Cory, congratulations for being the next mayor. With that, I'll move on to reports from our city manager, Steve Saxon.
Thank you. Sam, I owe you an apology. We all thought you were taking long smoke breaks, but come to find out, you were sitting in Cory's office, so. Yeah, I want to, I, I just want to have a quick rebuttal to the storm spotter story where I...
I think it was all true.
No, 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 no. This was a precursor, when the mayor was screaming at me, keep going, keep going, and we're running into the court. So I should have known then, he was going to...
Steve, there's stuff going this way, we need to be going back the other way.
What a joy it was to see the Public Works crew, and thank you for giving them a shout out. They are almost never celebrated in that way. And those guys, like you said, I mean, not much I could add to it, but when they're out there in seven degrees and waist deep in freezing cold water, and to have the mayor show appreciation, that's a big deal to them, and we, we sincerely thank you, and what heroes they are to me. What I would like, you brought up a little bit about the new lights, or the need for lights at the Blake Off fields. What I'd like to do is maybe this month, toward the end of the month, Bryant and I have already been discussing having maybe a couple of town hall meetings, where we are going to discuss what's going on, this is what's happening with, we have lights, we don't have these poles, this is the cost to install, all of that, so that there's no misinformation getting out. So we're going to, we're going to try to bring that in, into a more formal setting where everybody can hear good information and ask questions. When would it be done? Why, why aren't we doing this? And we can show them, hey, we're trying to pay for a sewer plant right now, but, so we're going to do that, we're going to get some good information out. Mayor, Tim, Eddie, what a pleasure it has been to serve under you guys, hate to see you go, and all we can hope is that the passion that you guys led with is continued by those that are taking your seats. As long as they love the people of Seminole, I, I think that will happen. You've set a great precedent. The housing boom is in full force. I mean, this is the golden years, as far as I'm concerned with Seminole, it's, we're getting a lot of structures up, you're going to have plenty of housing for our workforce and the management teams that come along with those workforce. We've got a good stratification of, of all the housing spectrum, and we're super excited to see what the future holds. Made in Oklahoma, it's going to be happening April fifth, make sure you're a part of that, and get involved with the Arts Council. They're doing a lot of great things. That's all I've got. Oh, oh, one, one other thing I forgot to mention. In our presence, you guys know by now that we're very good at chasing money. The staff is fantastic, but in our presence tonight, we have a former OWR, Oklahoma Water Resources Board guru that is now employed by Baker and Associates. Randy, you didn't introduce him, I thought you would, but...
That's Randy, being Randy.
But one of the things that we're going to be chasing very quick, very soon, is something called the P three program. And had I known you were going to be here, you would have been on the agenda to kind of talk through that, but this is a program where we're going to be able to go out to our local companies and ask that for a public project, that would you be willing to pledge your employment tax? So when you pay in your state employment tax, the P three program allows us to capture that, put it in a pool of money, and do the public improvement. So we're going to be doing that very soon, and we're so grateful to have you on, out of the OWRB into the other side, into the good side, the bright side, where you can help us weave through that. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Our city attorney. Hey, I can't add too much to what everybody said about, about you guys, but Eddie, Tim, Jeff, the one thing I've appreciated is just the common sense approach that you brought to all the decisions that you made. You always just, you discuss things the way they should be discussed, you've done the, the right things in, in all instances, maybe sometimes not the most popular, but I don't think the, the general public really comprehends how hard it is sometimes to be a city council member. And there's a lot that goes in with it, but to you, Jeff, the way you presided over these meetings and your knowledge of the Meeting Act, Roberts rules, the things that you have to do to manage this, is, was extremely refreshing to me, because I didn't have to worry about it. And, I mean, I had some painful experiences in, in, in the past, you know, with some inexperience, with some new mayors and, and getting used to that, but the experience you've had as a council member, it's been tremendous, and I commend you for that, because these meetings have been, they're really efficient and run the right way. And I don't think we've ever had any, at least that I can remember, any issues with Open Meeting Act violations or anything that even was close. So that's a big, that's a big thing in, in, in government, so kudos to you and, and good luck to you guys. I know we're going to be seeing each other, so just all three of you guys, job well done. So that's all I have. Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.